We're all here.
Okay, well, it's after nine, so I'd like to respect everyone's time and go ahead and get started. Really appreciate the REC Commission taking this time to meet with us and discuss some shared goals. During the pandemic, it was really difficult to have these types of discussions and they really are so critical to ensuring that we're on the path to completing the master plan. And so lots to discuss on the agenda today, and I think I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Justin to kick off the discussion.
Good morning. I was reminded by IT, this is being broadcast live. So for what that means to you, just be aware. So yeah, we did put together, Tony and I put together a four-part agenda, but hopefully everybody has. I do want to point out that Amy, I think, put together this three-page document, the very front of the agenda, which is summary of the joint master plan. We realized that a lot of folks, especially on the city council, I think only Jade was the only one that was here when that was adopted. So if you haven't looked at that in depth, this is just a very high-level summary that we included. We encourage you to look at that. If you want our copies, I can make those available. There are links on our website and HUTRAC's website as well. So with that, we will jump right into the aquatics master plan. So last spring, we engaged Lambert-Nerson out of Kansas City to really look at aquatics in our community and what aquatics are going to look like in the next fifteen, twenty years. Our pool is twenty years old. It's not in dire straits, it's not falling apart, and it's not something we have to address maybe next year, but it's something we need to start planning for. And so we engaged them, did some community outreach, did some surveys, compared our attendance in our community to other communities in Kansas, and even up to the point that we started looking at potential scenarios. I think Tony and I kind of quickly realized that these were big decisions that were going to be made that were impacting this community for twenty-plus years, and it was way more complicated than we thought it was going to be. So we got to a point that we kind of wanted to just push pause and get input from the elected officials to understand what your desired outcomes and what you think success looks like in aquatics in fifteen or twenty years. One thing we learned really early on was that we are really underserving our community as far as attendance goes. Our average visits, I think the last couple of years, were just under thirty thousand annual visits. It looks like compared to other communities, we should be serving between forty-five and fifty-five thousand visits a year. So we're considerably under that mark. And so as we started looking at potential scenarios, there were some scenarios that could get us to that fifty-five thousand mark. There were also some scenarios that would maybe focus more on long-term operating costs. There were other scenarios that, you know, added in some wow factor. But before we started really going down any of these paths, we wanted to get feedback, feedback from the local officials. So Tony, you want to jump in and add anything?
No, just, we're at that point where do we reinvest in the existing location that in our opinion is not going to result in the number of residents visiting? From what we hear as the operators, you know, why people don't come to the splash, location is always up there. There's other things, amenities, perception of safety, those types of things. But the location seems to be that common theme as far as why most residents are not coming down to the splash. And so before, in our, from our point of view, before any dollars are spent improving the splash, we need to have a conversation of what the expectation is on that attendance. I don't want you all to invest millions of dollars in improving the splash and in five years, attendance isn't any better, right? So what is the goal? Is the goal, you know, that level of service with the number of residents that we should be seeing at the facility? Or is the goal just what we have now and maybe some improvements over with that?
The four things that came up as kind of the negative things about the pool. First was location came up repeatedly. Perceived value was something that came up. Perceived safety. I mean, I use the word perceived because, not that our pool is unsafe, it's just that people felt that it was unsafe. And then amenities. And those were kind of the four things that people said. Also, people weren't shy about saying, "We take our family to McPherson, we go to Salina, we go to Derby." Even though they live here, the amenities that we have aren't that different. Compared to Salina and Derby, they are, but we lose a lot of people to McPherson. And one thing they really have that we don't is the lazy river. So is that a big enough driver show? Or is it other things? Is it the location that's some of those?
And clarification on the safety, as we drilled down into that in the focus group, it wasn't fear of drowning. They didn't feel like that was unsafe, it was the atmosphere was unsafe, is how we heard that. So there was never any indication from us that, oh, that there isn't, it isn't being guarded well or anything of that nature. It was just the atmosphere is what they drilled down into.
Justin, do these numbers include the splash pads that are on Seventh Street and Avenue A Park?
They include all of the chemical maintenance. They do not include, so we have one employee.
No, no, the attendance.
The attendance, no, 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 because we don't capture attendance at Splash.
I'm curious if, so I have a couple of thoughts. I'm curious if the data suggests a return to neighborhood pools? Because I thought that maybe I read that. And secondly, if we choose not to invest in Salt City Splash, I'd like to have a feel for what mothballing that facility looks like and/or how it could be repurposed so that it's not a complete write-off of, you know, public assets. Do you have any?
Yeah, to address Salt City Splash, any scenario that changes location? There's not, there's not a scenario that we would completely mothball Salt City Splash. One of the ideas we've kicked around is we keep the fifty-meter pool. Because they're not as common anymore, having the long pool for competitive swimming. And then maybe we do something with the zero-death entry, maybe that becomes a large splash pad. So now we're only guarding one body of water instead of multiple bodies of water. So we haven't even looked at a scenario that completely gets rid of Salt City Splash. We have looked at scenarios that could potentially downsize the pool. And then maybe that's in conjunction with another neighborhood-type pool or two.
Would the cost savings on the labor side be sufficient enough to, you know, have the ability to invest in another facility elsewhere in town? Or not? Or would we just be adding? I mean, I'm not opposed to adding, just curious.
Yeah, I mean, outdoor aquatics is a losing game. There's not a scenario, you know, maybe Derby, maybe, they may, or even maybe Salina, but those are huge aquatic centers that I don't know that that's what we're necessarily into. There would be a significant reduction in cost by downsizing Salt City Splash from an operational standpoint, primarily for Hutrec because of the fewer numbers of bodies they would need to staff. So less guards, less concession workers, those sorts of things.
But from like a facility maintenance?
If we reduce the amount of pumps and filtration systems at Salt City Splash, you know, and added a second or third pool, it's probably a wash. I don't see that would be a tremendous amount more work. Especially newer facilities are going to be a lot more efficient, they're going to use chemicals more efficiently, pumps are going to be more efficient.
And Jade, on the staffing, yes, if you build just one smaller pool, there will be some savings on staff, but in no way would that offset a capital investment of the magnitude that this would be. So, yeah. It might be, you know, there might be a few operational dollars saved on that, but the millions of investments that it would take, you're not going to recoup that on staffing, if that's where you were going.
Yeah.
And the neighborhood, just the neighborhood pool thing did come up, you know. If you looked at the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we talked about, a lot about barriers within our community, major streets, intersections, if you will, railroads, that residents, you know, feel like that's, we don't cross that because of danger, especially with young kids and so forth. And so when you're looking at the location of our parks and our amenities, that became a very big issue on those barriers. And so the idea behind the neighborhood pool is if you strategically put those three back, remember, we had three, I guess, it was before me, but there was three neighborhood pools. That reduces the amount of barriers that the residents in that area would traverse to get to the pool. So that's kind of where that neighborhood pool. If you went back with three, staffing's probably pretty similar to what the splash is, you know, if you did all three.
The better act.
The better act is for, you know, we get into this discussion, what's efficient and what's great for the residents, right? Sometimes those things don't mash, you know, mesh very well, so.
And the other thing with adding other bodies of water is it will impact operations from an hour standpoint because now Hutrec can have more flexibility for swimming lessons. So right now, we close down, that was one thing we heard, especially from the young professional group, is they like some evening swims or some later swims. Hutrec has to close open swims so they can offer swimming lessons. So having multiple bodies of water, you know, maybe this neighborhood pool can say open till eight or nine o'clock because swim lessons are at Salt City Splash or something. So that would be another way to engage, especially residents, you know, they get off at five and it's really hot out and they want to run down to the pool. That's not a great option, the way we're set up now.
So twenty years ago, what were the main drivers to go to one centralized location? Because we're kind of doing the opposite of what we're talking about here.
Yeah. I don't know the main drivers, but we were definitely ahead of the curve when it comes to aquatic centers. If you look at the timeline of when aquatic centers were being built in Kansas, we were one of the first. And I think there was just a movement that to have something, you know, much more than just a giant bathtub. It's a zero-death entry, it's the slides, it was diving boards. That was exciting, that was giving people, I mean, you look at the first two or three years of attendance, we were doing eighty or ninety thousand visits.
First three years were plus nine.
So we were bringing people from, you know, all over central Kansas to come swim. Well, now, you know, McPherson has one, you know, and everybody has something very similar. And so now it's, do we want to compete in that market anymore? Do we want to even compete with the aquatic center? Do we just want to offer our residents a place to go on a hot Wednesday afternoon to go swim with their family, which is more the neighborhood model?
Well, I mean, if we're going to do the aquatic center, what kind of ways can we differentiate ourselves from our competition? Because otherwise, I think we're just spinning our wheels a little bit.
To be honest, we haven't gone really far down the full-blown aquatic center path because of the price tag. I mean, that's, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, ninety-dollar project to do something like that.
Oh, like thirty side more than that?
Yeah, and the price tag's huge, John, and again, it's not an operation success, you know. Certain communities, you know, if you hit the sweet spot, Derby's one of those sweet spots, they can charge eight, nine, ten bucks, you know, a visit, plus have plenty of people come, they pull a lot from Wichita when you look at their attendance. So they're, in a lot of ways, they're serving as kind of that oceans of fun of Wichita, right? So they're a true aquatic park. I don't believe Hutch has the demographics to, and the regional pull to do that. I just don't believe there would be enough bodies to say, hey, we're going to do a full-blown aquatic center, aquatic park, if you will.
Was that funded through Starbonds?
Derby's? I don't know, that's before my time in Kansas, so I'm not sure.
I think they're getting ready to do that beach concept.
That's the Starbonds one.
Apparently Derby has a way to fund a lot of, you know.
Well, I think, you know, one thing in the master plan that was really highlighted, obviously because the CrossFit Shield funded it, was the health aspect, like how can we program and make spending decisions, public spending decisions, based on if it improves the health of our residents? And I think if we're really following that model, it comes back to accessibility, and there's an equity factor in that too, in that some areas of town are going to have more ability to drive longer distances. So I really, I really like the neighborhood pool model just from an equity standpoint and from the opportunity it offers to get more people active. So I don't know where.
What were the potential locations and how many neighborhood pools?
Haven't nailed those down a hundred percent. That is something that we will do, if that's the direction we want to go, we can have that conversation with our consultant. You know, historically, there was one at Rice, one at Fairgrounds, and one at Cary Park. So we have talked about Fairgrounds as a potential location, talked about somewhere near Rice, somewhere near identified Rice.
Basically where the splash pads are, that's where the pool's at.
Yeah, it's where they were. I think the Rice part, location would be too far west. I think we'd want to be further east for that portion of town to be more equitable and where people could reach that. But yeah, we have not, we didn't go down that road yet, that's why we paused, because there were so many questions.
I know this is, what about, what about Hospital?
Oh, yeah, I'm having a hard time.
Actually, that's an idea of ours. That's on the, that's on our list.
That's all I was saying.
I think they're afraid they wouldn't give us that.
If we paid a demo, what they'd be like here.
Yeah.
And John, you know, the change, back to the point about, we went from three neighborhood pools to, Justin's correct, that at that moment in time, the new aquatic center was all the rage. But I think we need to, it's important to, when you look back, the original location for that was recommended to be Fairgrounds. And the original recommendation was a lot more amenities, lazy river and so forth than what was built. At the time, for whatever reason, they reduced the scope of what they built and they changed the location. And so I think it's very important that if we're going, whichever way we go, we've got to, we've got to trust that that data that comes from the groups that help us and make sure that we're not trying to outsmart them, because this is an example of, it didn't quite work. After three years of ninety-plus thousand attendance, you had another two-ish, maybe three of sixty, and then it just fell off. And you've been below, you've been below forty for over a decade.
The aquatic center concept, okay, so if we were to do, make an investment in aquatic center and we put the amenities in it, is it going to be, chances are that in four or five years down the road, one of our competing cities is going to come up with the same thing, it's going to rebuild.
They'll build it, they're doing better.
Yeah, the decision really is make you want to keep competing in a sector we're failing in. Or do we just go back?
Or we want to serve our residents.
Yeah. Or do we just want to say, if somebody really wants to go to a big aquatic center, they can drive to Wichita or Derby, but we still have amenities available? So that's the big question. Are we going to compete in something we failed at? Probably not. Let's just get what people want.
The only way I can see the aquatic center really making sense is if we have something here that is, that's complementary that another city can't do necessarily, like an attraction it's next to, or something that no one can compete against, even, I mean, a lazy river, yeah, someone else can do a lazy river. Is there some way that we can do an aquatic center in Hutchinson that is either near another attraction that no one else can do? Or we have something here, park-wise, that because of our geography, that no one else can copy, to really differentiate ourselves? Otherwise, I think the mindset should be serving the community more than a business case to attract other people.
Yeah, is it a tourism issue or is it a health and all policies issue?
I say we focus on sports for Hutchinson, maybe aquatics for other communities.
The point about the tourism, so one of our stakeholder groups was The Chamber, and in no way speaking for them, but what we heard from them was they didn't see a tourism avenue with this. With the changing of school years, you know, our season's only eighty-six days, right? So we're only talking eighty-six operational days, if all eighty-six, the weather's good for all eighty-six of those days. And so it is a big investment in a short, a short period of time as well.
What do, so you're the professionals, you work in this world all the time. Do you think we should be moving to the neighborhood model or do you think we should go big or go home?
We'll do both, Jade.
It's Brett's line.
There you go, there you go.
Oh, never mind.
What we're hearing is the smaller-scale neighborhood seems to fit what Hutchinson is. Back to John, to your question about can we build the latest, greatest thing, we sure can. Will we have to charge to, you know, pencil that out? Hutch residents are not going to pay. They're just, they're just not.
I just don't see the business case of it.
Correct, you know, our, we're, you know, four dollars, five dollars, you know, depending, youth child to get into the splash now, and that's perceived as too much over a summer. And so if we were to build something like that, now we're talking ten to twelve dollars a day to get in to a facility like that. Is that serving the residents that are here? Or is that a serving residents that maybe drive in from out of town, from other towns, residents from other towns?
So the idea of splash would be to make it more of a splash pad with the one big pool?
That was one of the initial thoughts, was where the zero-death entry is now, the playground, the splash playground, and that maybe just becomes a large splash pad, and then we keep the fifty-meter pool. And maybe we have some additional pavilions or something like that around it.
But you'd be getting rid of the little water splash being, just making it a cool little splash pad, so that there's a little less maintenance.
And that might be, I think the intent, that would be more of a destination-type splash pad, so it wouldn't be much. Because, and the other thing we've kicked around is can we fence it in a way that that splash pad is open and free other than when the fifty-meter pool is open? And so, because our splash pads are open for a lot longer than our pool is.
Yeah.
And so can we fence it in a way that?
A lot of people like the splash pads because you can just sit there and let your kids run, you don't have to really, you know, you're not worried about them getting them to get water.
I think it's important to note that the fifty-meter pool, the scenario of keeping that does not necessarily mean that it's open for just general swim. It's more of a specialized, it's swim teams, it's water aerobics, it's, you know, maybe there is an amenity. There's those ninja, aquatic ninja courses, you've maybe seen, you know, that you can put over a pool like that. Maybe there is a tourism aspect in that scenario, but it would be very limited in hours and in the guarding of that, to make that all pencil out, if that makes sense.
And I think with the direction we're getting here, I think we can come back with two or three different scenarios, and still look at neighborhood pools and then look at options at Salt City Splash.
Yeah, my only thing is if we're going to go to neighborhood pools, we don't necessarily need an aquatic center, so I would like to see it not be an aquatic center, so we don't have to have that upkeep and maintenance. Let's downgrade it so that it offsets.
Downgrade it would.
From not being really an aquatic center.
Right, and that would be the idea.
Yeah.
So a scenario we could bring back would be the utilization of the fifty-meter, so we can keep that fitness component, aquatic fitness component in town with swim teams. I know the Y uses the, as a swim team. Stand-up paddle boarding is catching on, we do that in some of our down hours at the splash as well. So there could be a scenario where that's more of a specialized use for the fifty-meter that could maybe help break even on that part of it, you know, that operation we tested in the numbers. But then, yeah, then the neighborhood pools would be more your general swim, traditional, kids just ride their bikes down in the summer and swim for a few hours.
So are you thinking kind of like a centralized east and centralized west, are you thinking?
I really think we need to engage the community and really look at those barriers that were identified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and where can we locate that facility, two to three facilities that is most convenient for the majority of residents in those areas.
And we can also look at who owns private pools, so just using aerial photographs, you can look at what private pools are, backyard pools are. And so all of those things can go into potential location sites.
When would you expect to come back and when would these be programmed at the CFP, or do you have a feel for that?
You know, I think we could wrap this process up, with the direction we're getting today, I think we could wrap this process up in a few months, four or five months maybe at most, and have a kind of final scenario that both bodies really like. And then I would be, I'm not thinking, yeah, five to six years, start really looking at adding those. And like I said earlier, our pool's not in dire straits, I mean, it doesn't lead, our pumps are still good, those sorts of things, so. I mean, that's kind of what my expectation was, now if there's an expectation to do it sooner or later, I mean, I'm definitely looking to that, but. You know, the idea was to get ahead of this, so we're not making a last-minute decision that you've been some thought, put into the types of pools and location. And then we can see it coming for two or three years from a bonding standpoint, understand what that does to our ability to bond other projects.
This neighborhood pool stuff, now Cary already has its pool right now, so you wouldn't have to build one with that side of town. You'd only have to add two more neighborhood pools, right?
Steve, it would depend on how we, what amenities we would run.
That's what I was wondering, how many do we actually need if you have, you know, you have the Y, you have the one, and like you have other, like how many do you actually?
Well, that would be part of the work, you know, is.
Do we just add one more somewhere?
To me, it's definitely two neighborhood pools without the utilization of the splash down. And this is where it gets cumbersome, is the splash is designed and laid out to be an aquatic center. It's not a neighborhood pool, right? So the neighborhood pools that we're talking about building will look completely different. So I get your point that maybe just use the splash, but then we're not, we're way not ahead, right? Like, we're further behind because we still have to staff it at the level of an aquatic center versus staffing at the level of a neighborhood pool.
And it's already demonstrated that there's, you know, there's accessibility challenges there.
There is, you know, yes.
When I was little, we just wanted to walk, and you just don't do that.
And part of the scenarios is the population of those areas, you know, that side of town, the population is not huge. And so if it's further south like it is now, how many residents really will be able to access that? That's part of that study the consultant will do, is, hey, the population areas fit this scenario for two to three.
I just don't want to add, like, I would like to not add a bunch of expense by adding a bunch of pools.
We're talking outdoor aquatics there, it's going to be expensive, there's no, I mean, I'm going to just, it's honest, I mean, that's, it's an expensive deal.
I don't want it to be more expensive than what the aquatic center is now.
Operation-wise?
Yeah.
I think we can get there. Operation-wise, I think we could do a scenario, the capital.
Because if you're providing less, but it still costs more, that doesn't make sense either. I think we should be mindful of that when you're thinking about having community pools to add.
Well, I mean, that was a sustained twenty-year bond.
Right.
It's, yeah, we're going to be looking at something similar.
Very similar, yes.
I'm concerned about, you mentioned maybe taking that fifty-meter pool and only using it for special events or whatever. That concerns me a little bit, that we're going to pay for a swimming pool. It may or may not get used an awful lot. It seemed to me, it would seem to me, if we keep that portion of it, that we would want some sort of open swim at some point during those eighty-six days.
And we can look at that, we would want to, that scenario would still need to be vetted on, do we feel we can recoup?
Well, you're paying for the chemicals anyway, and I just can't imagine you're going to do a whole bunch of classes that are going to fill that pool.
That would be a, we would have to vet that out, correct? We're not sold, I mean. It, we're not sold, I mean, we're, I'm not here saying that that is a viable, uh, scenario at this point. It's an idea that's on the list. But we would want to confirm those specialized uses. Could we charge? The idea behind that one is we would break even on that particular operation. So we would want to, if, we would treat that like a, almost a for profit type scenario. The neighborhood pools would be the more resident led or, you know.
Well, I would want to be sure we're right on being sure that we're serving the amount of people that we could possibly serve with a pool that big that we're gonna, that we're gonna keep.
I agree. We're, we're in agreement.
Especially because if it has a really awesome splash pad, parents might have older ones that wanna swim in the pool and have their younger ones running around.
Back to my earlier comments, those splash pads are busy, busy, busy all summer long. Now, they're with kids five and under.
Right.
Um, and and I don't know if we need to meet more of that need than the, the teenager that wants to go get in the big bathtub.
I think they're busy because they're free.
I wonder that too.
And it's not just five and under. Sometimes you have people that are, go into the pool and they just go to the splash pad.
Yeah, I mean, they're just hanging out and letting their kids run. Anyway, just an observation.
Yeah.
I do think we want to be actually more mindful of the older child. Uh, like, we have a lot of amenities.
Yes, I agree.
For under five.
I agree.
Um, which I love, cause my child's young. But I hear, anytime I talk to youth in this community, that there's not enough for them to do. And by that, I mean that kind of like preteen and teen. So.
That was something that came out in the master plan, not necessarily just aquatics, but that sense of adventure. That there's a sense that they're risking getting hurt by doing some activity that they would like to do. That we don't, that we don't have. And the only thing we have that kind of fits that hole is the skate park. So that's something we heard.
That place is always packed, that skate park.
And so we have, we did some amenities, somebody mentioned that ninja, ninja ward over the pool. So there are some, some options. So these are all things we can kind of continue to vet out and we can bring back in four or five scenarios. Uh, they kind of look at the neighborhood pool and then look at what happens at Salt City Splash. Now that we have a general direction, it makes it a lot easier for us to then kind of hone in on on multiple options. So I envision us getting back together again with, uh, scenarios. We can all kind of look and say, okay, for this option, now let's plug, start plugging that in.
Well, maybe we can plan that for our fall meeting in like October. Is that sufficient time? It'll be six months.
I'd be curious if the equipment for the splash pads would be able to support a size four with the same equipment.
Say that again.
The equipment, the pump, the filters and pump and everything?
Yeah.
With splash pads, would they have the capability of handling a pool?
No.
Is splash pad online?
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, it wouldn't generate enough gallons, certainly.
And I mean, some of those facilities are relatively new, so I wouldn't wanna like dig them up and put a pool in. Especially Rice. Rice is, what, twenty seventeen?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, seventeen.
And to put a pool next to it.
So it has splash.
Yeah, no, that's a.
Manhattan has that, especially.
You see that regularly, a, a, an admission fee pool next to a free splash pad. That's not an uncommon.
You don't touch the pickle.
That way the older ones.
All right. That gives me plenty of direction, Tony. Are you comfortable moving on to the next item?
Yeah, I, I feel like athletics. I feel good that you all kind of know where we're at. So you're not, when we do bring scenarios back, it's not a surprise. So.
Yeah, great.
And the other thing, I, we won't, I sent a memo with the delay is we didn't want to have this conversation with the previous council. Knowing that we're potentially going to meet two new people on the council. So that's why I kind of said, hey, let's not have them give us input and then ask this body to approve it. So that was another reason why we said, let's just pause it and let's get, uh, let's get, let me focus on this. Okay. Uh, with that, we will move on to the second item, um, which is the athletics report and then, uh, discussion on Hobart Deter or concession stand. So, um, Tony, do you want to just hit the highlights of the athletic report from twenty one?
Sure, Justin. I should have warned you. I haven't asked you. No, no. So obviously, um, twenty twenty one, we still, you know, we're navigating COVID, uh, type, type issues. But the good news is, is that, um, we did see an, an operational, um, profit, uh, of that. So while we had a lot of tournaments that didn't, uh, go, that were scheduled because of various reasons. Uh, some were weather, some were, um, just teams fearful of of traveling and so forth. The tournaments we did have performed very well. Uh, so as you can see in the report, uh, for the Hutch Rec side of things, we did, uh, net approximately eighteen thousand dollars to the good, uh, on the operational side. As we always say, that's not the maintenance side, that's the operations side. Uh, the, those dollars are available to spend at athletic facilities. Uh, so they are sitting there. Justin and I wanted to have this conversation, um, in general, uh, about athletic facilities before we, we decided where, uh, those monies would be spent. As a reminder, in twenty nineteen, uh, the operational income of around twenty three thousand, I believe. Uh, we reinvested that into new, uh, picnic tables and such for the facilities. Uh, if you were out there, we had a lot of beat up old picnic tables that people were using, uh, for eating their lunches between games and so forth. And so we made that investment, uh, at that time. And we'd look to something similar with the eighteen thousand. Didn't go very far, but, but we would try to maximize that the best we can. Um, again, just continuing to, uh, you'll note on the report on the subsidy, um, we reversed, um, we reversed that the last three years. Uh, Hutch Rec took over operations in twenty fifteen. Um, and there was a significant, um, subsidy, uh, both from the chamber and this, uh, from the visit Hutch bed tax and the city. Uh, about twenty seventeen, the bed tax went away from support. Uh, but we were able just to keep moving in a positive direction. And so now we feel pretty comfortable that our, even if we're a down year, it'll be a break even, um, scenario for us. Happy to answer any questions you might have on the report and then we can talk about our concession issue.
I have a question from a citizen. Tell me that, uh, Bud Deter, the waters fall down on the, on the plates? And they had to cancel a couple of tournaments because they couldn't get the, uh, the fields ready to go? Is that true, not true on that?
Well, it's time to fold, Steve. So the location of that next to the, the river or, or water table is very, so we, we get any significant rain.
I got you.
It makes it difficult. If we do have a rain event, we could have to cancel a, a tournament because we just have standing water.
Don't we have drains in those fields? The drain field? There's no drain back there?
You know, it's, I mean, it's a dirt field and it's raining. There, there's a point there where you just, no matter how well tuned our maintenance system is, we can't remove three inches of rain within a short amount of time, you know? If the rain event happens on Tuesday, we're great. If it happens on Friday before a Saturday tournament?
Right.
Not so great.
Right. So we do cover the, the infield, non-rain events, but what we, what we don't have is we can't cover the morning track.
Right.
So generally, when we, when we lose a game at Hobart Deter, it's because the morning track behind home plate, um, stays really muddy. It's also shaded, um, so we don't get sun and wind to it because of the, the stands and the overhead canopy.
Can't dry it up as fast.
Yeah, the rest of the field we can cover, um, or, or we'll get the sun and winds or dry. Especially early, early in the year, the college runs into, then it freezes overnight, um, cause it's in the shade all day. So that's why I throw in a couple of spot there.
But the, kind of groundwater coming up is a lot of the problem?
Uh, we have a hard time getting rid of water everywhere. We, cause it does have undergrains.
Yeah.
With that, we put them in.
There's a lot of events upstream, Steve, and we've had water standing in the concession stand because of that water table. So that, well, hand rain here in days, but yeah, that river spool and that water table raises those. So we've had, had those issues.
Is there any way to remedy that or, is there any way to remedy that without spending a fortune?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah.
Everything like run on.
I mean, yeah, you would have to, I mean, you'd almost have to move it to avoid that. Cause you're, I mean, you're right next to the levee, right? So you're, yeah, but that you can do. We have talked about digging a retained basin basically out beyond the outfield and start trying to force water that way. So, but is that gonna fill up the groundwater too?
I don't have a lot of questions on the report, but I just wanted to really commend both Justin and Tony. And I, I continue to remain impressed by how well this partnership has worked out with the city focusing on facility maintenance and the rec focusing on programming. And it's just brought a great deal of efficiency and, um, value to residents. Cause we've been able to increase programming while at the same time decreasing operational costs. And I, I just really attribute a lot of that to both of your leadership and ability to work well together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so concession stand. So in, in my memo, um, I kind of outlined that we, um, in the twenty twenty one budget, CFP budget, um, had three hundred and thirty thousand dollars set aside for a new concession stand at Hobart. Uh, that was based on a thousand foot building at three hundred dollars per square foot. Um, worked with an architect, went to bid, uh, bids were five hundred and twenty four thousand, and ranging all the way up to, I think, six or seven hundred thousand was our high bid. Um, obviously that was way too far out of budget to try to, you know, value engineer that down. So we rejected all, um, all the bids. I did work with the architect a little bit to try to shrink that footprint. We're staying with it with the five hundred dollar a square foot, which is insane number per square foot of building. Uh, and we were getting so small of building, it wasn't gonna meet Hutch Rec's needs to, to operate it. Uh, until we kind of, I said, yeah, that's not, we're not gonna spend, we didn't want to spend three hundred thousand dollars on a building that was gonna be inadequate from day one. And so we tried to just kind of wait. Um, and then Tony's had the idea, which I, I really like, and it's a good idea, is to take that, that we've set aside the bond, um, and actually put that money into the concession stand at Fun Valley. We've been out to Fun Valley. I mean, it, it, it works. It's not ideal. And Tony can speak a little bit more to it. Um, uh, it is their number one source of revenue, um, at Fun Valley is the concession stand. I think, I know that was true last year, but I think over the last several years it has been, um, they continue to offer more things and, 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 um, so, uh, it would be a refresh of the, of the upstairs as well, which they do operate primarily in tournaments, I believe. Um, as well as the main level. So probably some new equipment, um, really refining the way. Right now, if you're standing in line, if you're more than two or three people deep, you're actually standing outside waiting to get into the building. So.
So with the bleachers and the restrooms, would this be the last major thing if we weren't, or no? No, that's a, we need to get us to come to us.
No, it, uh, I mean, it's a, it's an older facility and back to the aquatics turf, you know, the turf conversation is, is something that we'll need to have soon. The, the reason for this ask, one is Justin's correct. Please don't build us a concession stand that isn't gonna work. And we have to use that for the next thirty years. Like, we, we don't want to do that. Um, the concession stand at Fun Valley is for effi, staff efficiency. It's not laid out the best. And so what, so we're not wanting to build new walls. We're just wanting to reconfigure what's inside. Instead of having just one entrance and you get your food, um, inside, we would look at three to four service windows around that. Shape that is, what shape is that? It's kind of a weird sided. In my, again, my understanding, that was the original, how that was originally laid out was you did not go into the, you know, into the building to receive your concession. It was all outside windows. For us, that makes a lot more sense. We can, we can move that faster. Um, we do very well. As, as the report says, we, we make a, a pretty good, um, pretty good income on concessions. And this would, I believe, only improve that.
Is that the bottleneck? I mean, do you think that there are people that are not gonna bother because?
Oh, you see, yeah. Cause it, it'll stretch, you know, ten, thirty deep. And there will just be parents that'll just say, it'd be faster. I've heard the comment, be faster running to town and get something, right? So what we, the reality is we just don't have the, the layout to, to do that better. If they're all, you know, if they're having to go around each other and over each other, um, to, to get that food out, then that's what causes that. So.
I mean, the, so if we're creating a more pleasant experience for people to attend games.
Correct.
But also are we creating a situation where we get an increase in revenue to offset the cost for the improvement?
I don't have the number, but I believe you will. Yes, we, and I think we've shown with the numbers, we already.
So, so you're suggesting that you have the outside windows and then because you're gonna be serving more people, you're gonna have a bigger, you're gonna, cause right now it's like half of it, it's kind of like a, come in one door, go out the other.
Yeah.
There's like a half a room that's not really utilized.
Correct.
And then you have a small kitchen with your amenities right behind it. So you're suggesting that you'll use the inside and make the ability to make more food?
Right.
And having outside windows? I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, that's fair. We're wanting to work, we'll obviously work with, um, a concession, concessionaire consultant on the layout. But the idea is if we can have three windows, if you will, of, with, we, we can just get people in and out faster. The, my scenario is nobody's inside.
And then maybe use workers on the inside to be able to.
To perform that faster, yeah. More of a centralized area that you, you know, the kitchen, if you will, is in the middle. And then it spurs out with these windows. So in no, customers with the scenario in my head, customers will not come inside anymore. It'll just be an outside service window. On the downstairs, the upstairs would remain, and we would still have the inside upstairs.
Would this allow you to store more, um, food, store more drinks, offer a wider variety?
It has, yes, it has. Right now, we.
I had to ask that.
We try, we try to fair enough pricing, um, uh, because we understand what we are. We're serving the community. So we, we, we want to be as fair as possible. We utilize those outside storage sheds for a lot of our concessions and that's one of our inefficiencies. You'll see concession staff just running back and forth. If those things were, uh, stored inside, we're not, we're not leaving the facility. So there's a lot of, uh, staff efficiencies to this that I would hope would continue to make money on, on top set operations.
That sounds great. And I'm, I'm for that. But I'm wondering how far does that push Hobart Deter down the road? And, and what are we gonna do? Can we do anything in the interim to shore up that or?
You're asking me, just fully fund it next year.
You know, we could, we can make it look more attractive. So we could, you know, put some new siding on it. Um, you know, can't do much about, you know, the shape of the building. It's super inefficient because it's really long and skinny. So from the, from operating standpoint for, for Tony's staff, it's super inefficient. Um, there, it also creates, where the line backs up, um, is also where a lot of balls come. Um, that's something that's becoming more and more, um, aware of expected or safety. Um, so we can't really change any of those things. Now, could we make some enhancements so it doesn't look as bad? And, um, so it looks a little bit cleaner and fresher for the next few years and then, and then budget for, um, would be, would be my take on it. And invest, you know, kind of investigate, investigate in siding on it, but.
Yeah. But you think Fun Valley's the greater need?
Um, I mean, well, Hobart's the greater need, as far as a facility goes. But the realities are nobody wants to pay that much per square foot for your goal. And.
That's the need.
I, for, I guess, Jay, to answer your question from our standpoint, as soon as those construction costs go, get down to an acceptable square foot, per square foot cost, that's when we would be back asking for new construction. That would be at that time. And then you guys can fund it or not fund it. We would not come, and that's what we did. We didn't want to be ridiculous with the expenditure of those funds. And so that's why we're asking to move it to Fun Valley for now. And then when the construction costs go down, we can revisit, uh, Hobart.
The design work's done. I mean, it's a, it's a good design. We both, we're both happy with it. Um, so it's just a matter of, yeah, hopefully things calm down on the cost side and then we'll get it plugged back in at some point.
Are you seeing any downturn in tournament registrations because of the competition in Goddard that's recently opened?
Tony? It comes and goes, yeah. I mean, yeah, I'm not, without a doubt, there are teams that have chosen, uh, to, to go to a Goddard tournament instead of all. It comes and goes, yeah. I mean, yeah, I'm not, without a doubt, there are teams that have chosen to, to go to a Goddard tournament instead of ours. But that happens, they could go to Derby.
Certainly, I understand that, but it seems like there's one more now.
There is, yeah. There's always, fortunately for us, they're, they're very proud of that facility and they price it accordingly. And, and so, we've been able to keep our entry cost reasonable. And, and so, we do, we feel, as the, the documents show over the last three years, even with that facility online now, we're still performing well.
Well, I think with that, my statement would be we really need to take care of Fun Valley, Hobart debtor, those things that are attracting people here.
So. We, we still got some improvements to make out there, but I appreciate that, yeah.
And Tony, that being said, another hotel would help you too, right?
I wasn't going to bring that into this. We, we are, we are very appreciative of the current hotels that are open and they work very well with us. They, most of them will comp our umpire rooms. So, a tournament that big, we bring in umpires from out of town. And they see enough room nights sold that they're willing to give us either free rooms or a huge discount on rooms for umpires. So, that saves on our operational costs if we're not having to pay those, for those rooms of the umpires. So, current hotels are great. There will be tournaments with other things going on in the community that hotel rooms are an issue.
Right.
All right, well, it sounds like that's agreeable. So, we haven't bonded any of that yet, so I'll start kind of working on, on what that looks like in terms of total cost and, and get some conceptual drawings. And then when we get closer, we can look at bonding and then that's when we can change the language from Hobart debtor to Fun Valley. So, if everybody's comfortable with that, I will, I will start working in that direction and we'll have to come officially in front of council at some point, so.
I was kind of waiting for someone to ask for an old state fair ticket booth as a concession stand.
We're ready to move on to, I don't see there. Yeah, so just a, a quick kind of update plus reminder of our budget request for the city's portion of the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. Just, just a reminder for everybody, it is a collaboration between Hutch Rec, the City of Hutch and the Hutchinson Chamber. The City of Hutch and the Chamber contribute $20,000 to that program. Helps with our, our full-time staff. Hutch Rec is 20-plus administrative, so that doesn't, our 20 does not include any of my time, any of our admin time. So, Hutch Rec has a significant more hours in than the other two, which is, is fine. It's housed there. Just want to make sure we all understand that it is a shared, shared collaboration. Things have gone really well. It seems to be one of our most popular community initiatives. The, the work that we've been able to do with Justin on improving Southwest Bricktown Park, Bernard White Park, and, and the coming online is Farmington Park. The residents want access to these amenities. They want these quality of life things. We hear that all the time from the residents. We want, we want to see improved sidewalks. We want to see access to trails. We want to see our neighborhood parks revitalized. And so, in partnership with the city, in the chamber, we've been able to, to do that. The only thing we, the complaint we do get is why aren't you in more neighborhoods? No, I got one staff position, right? And, and so, it's only going to move at, at that, at that speed. It's been brought up, should we have a true director? And initially, this program was set up to have a director of neighborhood development and a coordinator. The funding levels, we're only able to hire the coordinator. And so, we do not have a funded director's, and never have had that funded director's position. And so, I just wanted to throw that out there. Not, that's not an ask. That's just a, start that conversation. If we see value and energy behind what this is, maybe down the road, we need to look at, at what funding that position looks like.
Tony, do you anticipate if a, an additional position were to be funded, that the partners would be able to cost share in the same ratios or?
Yeah, I mean, that would be our, our idea, you know? If it's a true collaboration, continue that model that, you know, of the three entities equal sharing as far as dollars go. And Hutch Rec, at least right now, my board is very okay with the admin, you know, contributing to that program. And not being, you know, sharing that cost, but just really sharing the cost of the staffing and the programming that goes out.
Well, I, I know it's easy. Everybody has their pet, their pet projects. But this is certainly something I felt very strongly has been successful. And, and some of the reasons it is, is because it's really building civic engagement and neighborhood leadership capacity in areas that, of the community that have maybe not had a stronger voice in decision-making as they should. And so, I think it really helps, I think it really helps from an equity standpoint. And that it's, it's not the loudest kind of usual voices impacting where investments are made in the community. It's neighborhoods who maybe didn't know how to engage at the, at the city council level, of being shown how to do that, making their voice heard. You're seeing an effusement of investments based on their desires and not what people like me who live in a different part of town think they need. So, I think there's real power behind that and building community and kind of creating a, I don't know, creating a city where everyone feels heard.
It's a buy-in system.
It's a buy-in system, yeah. I would, I would love to see it expanded. I know that it's, it's really difficult when you talk about expanding staff because that's a, that's not a one-year thing.
No.
And it's really contingent upon getting the right person in that director role, right? Or you're not getting that bang for your buck. I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but those are just a few of my thoughts.
I look at Southwest Bricktown as an example and what it can do in regards to community pride. And then there's so many qualitative improvements that happen when people are problem in their neighborhood and they feel like they are represented or respected.
Yeah.
In the community.
And you're leveraging that, I consider a pretty small investment. When you have that pride, it spurs that private and neighborhood investment, you know? Because they, again, they feel like they're part of the community and not just moving through the.
But I mean, and every neighborhood has their, every section of town has their own identity in regards to where they're at. So, it's going to be different for every neighborhood.
And that's been the fun, right, working with residents and like, hey, this is what's important to us or this is what we're all about. And, and being able to help them build that capacity to go get those things done. You know, Farmington Park from the beginning was all about the park. And, and it's just exciting to see those residents, you know, engage in that process. They helped us design that park, you know, with Justin's, Justin's work. So, there, there's true buy-in from them that this is, this is our park. So, it's fun.
Without forgetting rivalry in between neighborhoods.
Yeah, well, sometimes a little like, hey, some pride and some, hey, live with us, you know, live in the part of town that we're in, that's, that's a good.
Friendly rivalry.
Correct, yeah.
Are we currently funding that through the general fund or is that alcohol funds? I don't, I don't know.
I don't have to verify that.
I'm not sure where it's, I know the check clearance on.
Justin, that's not coming out of your budget?
It's not one of mine, so I don't know.
I think it used to, so we used to have housing department within planning. That position used to be housed at the city for, for many years until we partnered with Hutch Rec. So.
Wanted it out there. Definitely want to get the official ask of the 20,000 for 2023 funding. You do have it in the 2022 budget, so well, our practice is to send that invoice the third quarter. To verify that we've done the work for the majority of the year. So, so we will send that invoice the third quarter of 2022. But yeah, if you guys can include that in your fiscal year 2023 budget, that would be much appreciated. And we'll continue to do the work as we are capable.
When you, so I know this is the, the official ask for the 20, which I assume we have consensus on maintaining that, but I.
Well, I know it comes back during budget time, but I want to make sure we're, we're good with getting it in the, the system there, yeah.
Well, when you, when you come back for budget time, will you have an alternate scenario with an additional position or no?
I was not going to instigate that unless it was requested of us. We've heard talk amongst different entities in town of wanting to beef up the neighborhood program. That's why I put it on here. I can definitely bring back what that looks like if you all are interested in that. Of course, my board will need to adjust their budget and the chamber as well.
I'd like to at least see it, I mean, because I think it's difficult to have a conversation without knowing the budgetary impact if there's no fiscal note. But we're, I mean, I don't know the thoughts of council. I don't want to put you through a lot of work if there's no appetite.
Well, are you saying that in order for more buy-in, more neighborhoods, more interest in this program, you need more money? Is that what you're saying?
To move faster and, and add more neighborhoods, yes. Because right now with the six neighborhoods, with the capacity building that we're doing within those six, it makes it very hard to start adding more, right? And so, that's, that's where we're at. If, as we continue to work with Southwest Bricktown and, and make sure they under, you know, the Fiesta that they've done and continue to work with Farmington Park and what they want to do, that's, that's staff time. So, there's six of those there now. So, we're kind of reaching that limit of being responsible to our six and then adding more. And we do have two more that we want to engage work, Downtown and the Lincoln area are the next two on our list.
Is the goal to hand this off to the neighborhood committees or not? I mean, the end goal, I mean, I, I think there's value. I'm coming from, I think there's value in what, what your person does at these meetings and keeps track. But is the end goal?
The, the end goal is to have the neighborhoods reach a capacity to where they don't need as much staff assistance in their initiatives as what they do right now. But the, the challenges of the, especially the neighborhoods we're in, the challenges that are, they're decades in the making. Those challenges have happened for decades. It is going to take, I would say, equal year to year, but it's going to take a while to change that capacity building within those neighborhoods. My scenario, when I laid out this plan a few years ago, I only had two positions. And that was, I never thought about going above that. I had a director position that handled that initiative, new neighborhoods, led that. And then I had the coordinator that was kind of the more day-to-day with the neighborhoods. We just were never able to fund that director, just the coordinator.
What would two coordinators look like opposed to a director?
To Jade's point, it, it comes to capacity and salary. So, if, if we want the, that position to be the right position and have the capacity to lead this, then we need to pay accordingly. Another coordinator is nice, but guys, we're not paying very much, right? The salary's not huge. And, and so, we, we have to be mindful of, of what that looks like for, for those positions.
I, I just think that like, and, and all I really know about is the Southwest Bricktown. They're at a point where I don't know that they need your guy there, or at least in a big way. I mean, it is nice to get the notes on what, what direction is very, he's very organized and that, that is helpful. But, but I wonder if, if, you know, I don't know how much time he spends, you know, probably a lot because we're busy down there.
You are, that is the goal, is to not have to be there all the time. And the neighborhood will let us know when that time is, like, you guys are annoying, we got this, go, right? We're not there yet.
Well, they're already talking about putting subcommittees and, you know, setting up the 501(c)(3).
They are, and we're close.
And so, I'm wondering if we can use him elsewhere, so.
But that's been what, seven years?
It's been seven years in the making.
Seven years is what it's taken to get that, to get the neighborhood to, to that point.
And I think each neighborhood will be different. Some may be able to do it in three, some may take 10, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Just so you know, my east, southeast, they're on to me about getting us going. So, they are really beating my door down.
We, and, and that's, I'm, I'm glad you brought, we hear that all over. They, they, they want, you know, hey, when are you coming to our neighborhood? When are you, you know, when is the city going to focus on?
But that just shows the, how good a job you're doing because they see what South Rec is doing and the other towns. So, hey, why can't we have that same thing, you know? And I'm their representative. What are we doing here? Come on, we want to.
I, I agree. And the additional staff person would help us move into more neighborhoods.
Well, I think I need him so he can help me organize it, you know what I mean? I know, how do we get the mechanics to be going? I don't know. But I mean, maybe I can talk to him.
Yeah, well, and I'm happy to visit with you as well. Again, we've gone through that initial assessment and we're, we're committed to Downtown and Lincoln for, for a lot of reasons. But yeah, those, then there's the next one and we can definitely look.
But the Lincoln's one too, so, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think it's like a beautiful microcosm of democracy. You're just kind of expanding democratic capacity. So, I'd like to see what it looks like, at least during budget time.
Okay, I will, I will bring that back to you.
I don't know if, I'm, I'm fine with looking at the number. I don't know if I'm 100% toward adding another position.
Yeah, I don't think any of us are until we know what it's going to cost.
And I don't, I don't, to be fair, I don't want you to just, if you think it's going to take hours and hours and hours and days of time to figure out what a new position they're going to take, but.
No, no, I, it won't. We can.
I'm all about looking at the numbers and seeing what makes work.
We will, we put the numbers together and.
I don't know if I'm comfortable with the director and then coordinator, maybe just two coordinators.
Can we just ask you to double up on your workload?
Just two more for less, yeah.
Thanks, yeah.
Continue, please.
Just continue doing that, yeah. So, I will look at what, I'll bring back both, bring back the, the director and then what a coordinator looks like. As long as we're understanding what the capacity of those positions are. Okay, let me make a note here. Justin, I get to move on to Arts and Humanities? Okay. So, just a brief history. Hutch Rec entered into a contract with the city at the end of 20, now, early fall of, of 2019 to continue the work of the Arts and Humanities Council. I don't know that we need to, apparently it wasn't working real well the way it was before. So, so Hutch Rec, they agreed in arts are, we're passionate about arts. We believe that public art and these things are important to a vibrant community. When you look around in, in other communities, there's investment in these things. There's your investment, but there's investment. And you try to work to create all the things that can come from, from this, from engaging art, music and, and community. And I think our Thursday's a, a great example of that. The, the budget I provided, I didn't get into detail. I just kind of wanted to show you where the funding is coming from and how we're expending the, the funds for, for the program. And happy to answer any questions on, on what that looks like. So, to us today, one is to continue the funding that you have allocated. It's 33,562. That number hasn't changed. We're not asking for an increase in that. So, we, we would just like for the fiscal year 2023 to continue that level of funding. But I am, I do want to have a conversation around disbanding the current council as it's formed right now. Definitely with good intentions, we created another level of government with the appointed Arts and Humanities Council. Granted, the 2020 and 2021 looked a lot different because of the pandemic. But that group worked hard in, in forming a, a robust plan for. but that group worked hard in forming a robust plan for Arts and Humanities. But they, the council itself is in agreement. They don't need to be so formal. So what we've, what we've thought of is, and I'll hand this out, the Heartland Arts and Culture Collective. Hopefully that goes around. And we're really, in some ways, doing this right now. This, by removing the council from the operation, that would give this a little bit more intentionality. But over the last two years, as we've done, as Hutch Rec's done this work, we've engaged the community, we've experimented with different programs. There is a lot of talented people in Hutchinson, right? It's amazing the talent that we have in this community. And this collective would work to bring that talent to the public, you know, give them some public options to see that, whether that's performing at Third Thursday with our Music on Main program, whether that's access to the Foxtrot media studio, which is, would hopefully be open here. And within the next month, we're finalizing the opening of that. And you can see the accessibility that our residents are going to have to a media studio. And we've heard that from them, that if you're a young artist, musician, we'll use a musician, and you don't have access to equipment. You don't have, you want to experiment. Am I talented enough, right? There's no avenue in Hutchinson right now for you to test that out. And so what this media studio is going to do is, at a very low entry point, you'll be able to come in and record a song. And, hey, is it working? You'll be able to go through our Music on Main program and use equipment at Third Thursday and test out, are you good with, you know, performing in public? And so it just starts to build that. The media studio would also allow businesses to do podcasts. So if you have a business and, or initiative, or you've got a nonprofit and you're trying to get the word out and a podcast is attractive to you, the studio would allow that to happen. So it really starts to create some, a central place for arts in our community to gather, be accessible during our community events, Third Thursday, the different festivals in town, kind of an open house feel for people to check it out. So we're really excited about it. We think we can move much faster without the cumbersome of an appointed board. The, again, my board and any of my members can speak to this, and the council themselves are in agreement that they don't need to be that structured.
So is the current council, do they have members from like the farmer's market, the art center, like what is the makeup?
So the current council, the way the resolution was written specifically says to be on the council, you can't be a board member or employed at any art organization. So, and that was in a lot of ways to protect the, when we do have a community ask for funding, that the council doesn't have those conflicts of interest. And so the way we would handle the community request moving forward would just be the Hutch Rec Commission. So if a community member would like assistance with one of their events, then they want to tap into that $6,000 of community dollars, that request would now come to the Hutch Rec Commission and not the Arts and Humanities Council. But I, our board has a lot of art advocates. Karen teaches drama and forensics, as Trinity Sue is very involved in that. And of course, Amanda, Sam and Leslie, so.
And frankly, I'm just going to piggyback on that. We actually drove to Winfield because my son is a musician and he recorded at a studio there. So we're super excited about this. I mean, it's, because we didn't have anything around and so, and so, and there's a lot of whispering that do fun things like that, even vocals. So there's a lot of young kids that are excited about a studio.
And just a point on the funding of this. So all of the equipment that we have in the studio was grant funded. So there's, at this point, there's been no local public dollars expended on that. And the rent for the facility for these, this first six months was covered by the Hutch Rec Foundation. So we've utilized grants and philanthropy to get us to this point. The business plan for this shows making dollars. It's a low entry point. We're not in any way, we're below industry standard for this type of facility, but we're also at a point that we're going to be able to retube our dollars to operate this. Just wanted to point this.
And hopefully I do, because I'm involved with a lot of the different community organizations, we have so many arts groups. We have more arts groups than we have patrons sometimes.
We have a Public Arts Design Council as well under the city, so it does seem duplicative.
It's, well, and the people, I do know a lot of the people who are on the appointed commission and they were fine with changing that. But the hope is too, that they have this, if there's this public facility where people are really using it, maybe that will also help some of our arts organizations start communicating a little better, working together a little more cooperatively, a little less competitively. And.
Hope springs eternal.
One has to have hope.
So another note on the idea of disbanding the council. David Sotella, am I saying that correctly? He visited with me on trying to be more inclusive with city boards, right? Like since we had the, you know, and trying on what that looks like. And of course, at the same time, I was thinking of getting rid of a city board. And, you know, he felt, and again, not wanting to speak for him, but our conversation was, this is a worthy experiment within this industry of individuals that don't necessarily like formal things, right? And so if we can, if we can establish this collective where you don't have to go through an appointment process to give input, then maybe we can do things along a little faster. We would treat it very similar to how we're treating the Reno County Vitality Team. So that is a group of community members. There's no appointment, there's no special consideration to come to those meetings. We host them at Hutch Rec and they give us input on how to improve biking, running, just quality of life type things within Hutchinson. This collective would be very similar. We would have a specific time where anybody that's interested in this world, if you will, of Arts and Humanities in Hutchinson, you'd be able to come in, talk about what's going on, provide feedback to Hutch Rec. And then that's what we would use to, for future program development. We would use that feedback and we would report that back out. So every, we have meeting notes for the Vitality Team. So every meeting, they get to see what was discussed last year and then we report for last month. And then we report back out how that went. So there's still going to be an accountability, if you will, to the work that we're doing. But again, the Rec Commission itself, this is what we do. And again, we're excited about it and we think that continuing to work in the Arts and Humanities area makes perfect sense. And we want to, we want to do that as efficiently as possible and managing a seven-member appointed board is not efficient.
So from a process standpoint, that would need to be an item on our agenda to coordinate that. And I think at that point, it would allow for additional public input, should there be people opposed to that.
The scenario, I did visit with Paul prior, just to make sure I understood that part of that, and Paul will jump in here if I say it wrong. But I believe at the next Arts and Humanities Council meeting, I'll have them vote officially like they want to do that. So you have on record that the existing council is in favor of this. And we would just bring that request to the city as an agenda item and then you guys could, what's the voided, indoor, I don't know what the term is called.
It's by resolution. Alls we have to do is repeal the resolution and then we would amend the contract with the Rec for this, for these services. It's not hard at all.
So if you're all in agreement, the council's scheduled to meet Tuesday. And I'll have on, the Arts and Humanities Council is scheduled to meet this next Tuesday. I'll have that on their agenda. We'll vote on that. Again, they've already agreed to it. And then we'll, we'll bring that request back to the city for a future agenda item for you all. Sound right? Who said we wouldn't get done in two hours?
With the group's indulgence, I have one item. It's maybe a challenging topic, but I've been approached several times and there seems to be a growing conversation in the community over what YMCA's potential involvement would be in some element of future aquatic operations, for daycare and other stuff too. But I, I don't know if that movement is big enough yet that it should be addressed in this study at some level. Obviously, if it's neighborhood pools, probably out. If it's an indoor aquatic center with other spin-off operations, it might be worthy of at least enough of a cursory view to be able to explain to the public why it wasn't viable or maybe why it was. Not advocate one way or the other, but I do notice that this conversation seems to be growing within a segmented group of pretty powerful stakeholders. And I think if we don't address it now through the study, I think at some point, we're going to be biting that apple and it might be us to address that as part of what we're doing. Thoughts?
And my, my bosses are sitting here, so they will. Sorry. If I say this wrong, they'll definitely correct me. Hutch Rec has no issue if the YMCA wants to build a new facility and privately fund that facility. If they feel that there's enough philanthropy in this community to do that, then they can go do that. Nobody's stopping them from doing that. Our issue is when we start looking at public funds. And if, if public funds are going to be used to run a public facility, that's the role of Hutch Rec. And I think we've demonstrated that we can do that efficiently compared to the other existing organization in town that has similar facilities. And so our, again, correct me. Our position is if the community is interested in indoor aquatics and that is publicly funded, then Hutch Rec should have that first opportunity to see what that looks like and keep that public access, that public intention and not a for-profit intention. The aquatics conversation we had before, the neighborhood pools was not about dollars, it was about serving the residents. And that's the difference between our organization and the YMCA. Is that fair? Okay.
Thank you for your thoughts on that. You know, it's valuable in my office to kind of address those stakeholders when we're continuously approached.
And I do think that, you know, the YMCA is a stakeholder like any other and should be included in conversations around aquatics. So I certainly think they deserve a seat at the table. So I don't want to, I don't want to close that off. We don't want to give the impression that we're not interested.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with you on that one too. Because you know, I'm. Sometimes private and for-profit necessarily doesn't mean less services. There's a lot of drivers that go in the for-profit for if there is going to be higher services, that there are people that are willing to pay for higher services. So I'm saying that's not necessarily a bad thing. And sometimes when, what I would like to say, the government gets involved and, you know, aquatics or quality of life, like the golf course or other things, you're also then become a competition to the private sector in a way that might stifle private sector investment that could happen necessarily, the government doesn't need to get involved to revive those quality of lives, is what I'm saying. You all know I'm very conservative and I think that the private sector is the one that should really be involved in the quality of life. I know that I've expressed that. I'm not saying that that's the expression of the council. I'm saying that's my personal expression and that, and I think it's okay. I would, I would love for the YMCA to build a big facility and have daycare and a huge inside facility that could be used.
Without public funds.
I'm not saying that.
So there's the issue, right?
There's other stakeholders. You guys do outdoor, they do indoor. I mean, I'm not going to say that.
We did sit down with the Y within this, the aquatics plan. So they were a stakeholder group and we did meet with them as we should and as we will continue to do so. And Justin, Amy, feel free to add to this. What was reported out, that the indoor aquatics is sufficient. The pool that they have, they were not in need of additional indoor aquatic space, is what they, is what they reported out to us. They, and they even went a step further. If the two school districts did not have the swim teams, they would definitely not need more indoor aquatic space. I feel we have to be very cautious to immediately go from an existing facility that maybe is not performing well to just dumping in 25, $30 million to save a facility that is not performing well without any community need other than a group of people that want to build that. When you go back to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, recreation centers were on that list, but they were 15th, I believe. The community wants these other things done first. Would we at Hutch Rec love to run a community center? And could we do that community center just as well or better than the YMCA? Yes, we can.
That's because you're at Hutch Rec. I'm sure we could hear the other.
I'll stay back there and do that all day long. I think our performance has showed that we can not only be responsible with the taxing dollars that are entrusted to us.
Well, I personally.
Can I finish? We, those tax dollars that are entrusted with us and look for avenues to make dollars when we can. The sports complex operation is an example of that. And so that's where that discussion has to start first, is with these two entities, not with the third party.
And I think the point that he was getting ready to make was that, can we build a facility and run it and operate it? Well, yes, but that's not what the community is asking for. The residents are not asking for, it's, there's, that list had, we want better access to trails. We want, there was a number of things that they want first. And so we feel obligated to do what our residents want.
I know, and I get that. And I'm just saying. It's your personal opinion that Hutch Rec is the best because you're at Hutch Rec. Personally, I used the YMCA for youth sports because I had a horrible experience with Hutch Rec and youth sports. So I have better, more organized because the person didn't get a hold of me, didn't have things, the direct, the person that's in charge of that, it was a complete mess. Like they had basically just four weeks of doubles for baseball. Soccer was a mess. I ended up switching over to the YMCA sports because it was better. So I'm saying, I understand you don't want to lose public funding, but that's your personal opinion that you're the best. That's, might not be the personal opinion to everybody in the community. I'm just going to point that out. I believe that you guys are both stakeholders and the discussion needs to happen. That's all I'm saying.
You know, I think there's a feeling that there's not been discussions. I'm sort of speaking for Karen a little bit now, but Karen and I and Tony have met over and over and talked to them over and over in emails and calls. And here's what we never get, specifically what they want. There's all this, they want promises and they don't tell us what it is they're bringing. So some clarity, people keep talking about childcare. I've never heard them talk about childcare. I think that's what we'd like them to talk about. But that's one of the things that's been really frustrating. And I'm not an anti-wire person. I was on the YMCA board in Nashville. But there's a way that you go forward when you're trying to get partners and that's with honesty and clarity. And we do feel like we haven't gotten that. I can honestly say, I still don't know exactly what they, what they want. But it would be really nice to hear it so we could have all known what we're actually dealing with, not just rumors. Rumors are great, they always sound wonderful.
I love them.
They're really good to talk about, but, you know, we just like to hear. They're really good to talk about, but, you know, we just like to hear, and we have met over and over.
For seven years.
Yeah. It, that is very, it's been years now. I didn't realize that, but you're right, it has been, so.
Sorry, and thank you for letting me address that, because I, I had assumed that you all, as a separate board, had discussed these things. The city hasn't, we've had internal dialogue, of course, but as far as any deliberate decision, I'm not representing that the city has done one versus the other, but that if we do have to address this later on to a segment of our population, that it might be nice to make sure that we address it in a portion of the study.
Yeah, it'd be really, I, I'm really glad you brought it up, Jeff, because it would be very unfortunate if the Rec came back with a well-thought-out plan, and then, you know, at that same meeting, we heard a lot of things and promises that we weren't aware of. So, you know, I would, I would challenge the Y to, to be involved in this conversation and to, you know, bring more clarity to what their vision is, what, what they bring to the table, what their ask is of the city, if there is one, so we know what we're dealing with, and can compare and make the best decisions.
Just one last, you know, the residents, 75 years ago, the residents of Hutchinson agreed to establish a Rec Commission for the purpose of what we do every day. And, and so we are the public arm of these quality of life amenities, and there's controls in place, audits, appointments to the board, everything's public, open meetings. Through us, you're ensuring that the interest of the public is, is being considered and met. That goes away as soon as you start giving private dollars, or public dollars outside of, of a public space. And so we, we could talk all day long on that, that the residents, sorry, Siri, had a horrible experience. I wish I would have known that, I, I could have corrected that for you. But our, our numbers show that, that we do have a, a good program, and we can, we'll continue to, to work in the best interest of the public, not a specific agency.
I just, I think, I've had great experiences with Hutch Rec. But I, I think that having more transparency, instead of maybe some backdoor conversations that would torpedo either side, I don't, I don't think that's helpful, and not in the public's best interest. So although this isn't maybe the most pleasant conversation, I, I think these conversations need to be happening in the public realm.
We're happy to do that.
I, I will say that when I met with the Y folks from Wichita, what I could surmise from the conversation was, their ask was, you build it and we will run it. They had no problem running it, but they wanted us as a public issuer of dollars to build it.
I don't, I don't have a problem with YMCA being part of the conversation and a discovery session. I think the two, for me, going back to, each one of us has their own opinion. I think there's two things for me to stick out. One is, is the goal meeting with what the public wants on their priority list-
That goes back to what they said.
And the other one is, we haven't had a recent success on helping fund for-profit entities, the atrium situation. I would want, that, that makes me nervous. I wouldn't want to go down that road again.
The Y is nonprofit, right?
Yeah, I would say that that's a mischaracterization. I think they are not-for-profit, like the hospital, and like, you know, several other things that obviously-
But, but a non, it, it's, it's a separate entity in-
Yes, yeah, it's not a governmental, not a quasi-government.
It's not City of Hutchinson adjacent?
Yeah.
Like the Rec is?
It's not a taxing afterward.
Those are the two things I think would be barriers into entry that they would need to address, as far as my concern on comfort level, on funding a project. But going back to the community center, or is it high on the priority list? If, if it was something that YMCA could bring something to the table in regards to number one, two, and three on the priority list of the community members, and public funds can go to help offset that, I'd be, there'd be a better business case.
I think that's where the, the daycare discussion comes in, because that is a very high priority.
Then, then the question for me would be, how is that daycare being addressed if public funds are being used? Is it for the public, or is it a small sector of the public? What's the accessibility?
That's why we need to have the discussion.
Yeah, I think that's why, I think including them in the discovery process would be worth it.
And I will say, it was mentioned, that their, part of their sales pitch to me was, they had very large stakeholders in the community willing to help with that. Just, just trying to give my thoughts on how I interpreted what was going on.
I think that's why it would be helpful that all of these side conversations we're having maybe be, you know-
Consolidated, yeah.
Yeah, maybe be consolidated for public consumption.
Just, Sarah, how is operating a daycare, which definitely is needed if you build a standalone daycare facility, I don't think anybody's going to argue with that, but what does a $25 million community center have to do with daycare?
They could have a daycare facility with a community center.
For how many people? So we're going to build a $25 million community center that the residents are saying, "Not now, do these other things," to open a daycare for 50 kids? Is that what they, right? So there's-
But that's, that's the question to ask.
That's why there needs to be-
Obviously, your line-
Inside aquatics too, so that people can do aquatics daily. We only have, outside, we only have, what, 86 days, you said?
But again, indoor aquatics is being that, so.
Be outside, and they be the inside.
I, I'd like to stick with-
It doesn't have to be a, a conflict between you two.
Jeff, would you feel comfortable engaging with the YMCA?
Partnership with two separate spaces.
Management and board about maybe hearing some sort of formal proposal? We just, I think we all are having side conversations and-
I have been.
Promises and, oh, you haven't had any meetings with the Y?
No.
Okay. I have.
I have been.
So.
To be fair, I think they should have the same amount of voice to get their, come in front of the five of us publicly, and here's what we'd like to do, and then get a vetting process in our heads among us.
Jeff, can you reach back out to Ron and just, maybe he could come for us and say, here's what we, here's what we can offer, here's what we like? Do we believe that it would be best interest of both the partnering agencies here to be part of that, that meeting, or is that a separate city council? Well, I think for transparency for the public to know what, I mean, that's, that's what. You mentioned it.
Yeah.
It's kind of been the elephant in the room.
It really is the elephant in the room.
I'm glad we're talking about it.
It's very fair to, to have them come in. Again, board members, correct me if, if I misspeak, but when we just went through the challenges of existing facilities, and funding, what we, we can't fund two concession stands, we can only fund one, but somehow we're going to have millions of dollars to give to a private organization. I, I have a hard time reconciling priorities here when-
But I think without having those conversations, what's happening is I think there is some undermining going on-
I would agree with that.
-of your organization, and maybe there's some undermining from the Rec of, of the Y. I, I don't know, but I, it's going to be hard to move forward successfully when these conversations are, are now being opened.
We're here, all of our meetings are public, we come to, we do the public side, so we'll, we'll be wherever, but we will have a serious pushback if all of a sudden there's millions of dollars to do something that is 15th on the list, and we can't build two concession stands.
Yeah. That's exactly the story.
And I, and I think, I, this is getting further into the weeds, but, you know, helping fund a facility where the money doesn't stay in Hutchinson. That money will go back to the, it's the greater Y, greater Wichita YMCA. That money's not going to stay in Hutchinson. It'll be part of their budget, and they will decide what to do with it. So I think that, that shakes me a little bit. I think that we need to, I prefer local control. I prefer that we, in Hutchinson, control our own.
And I think the stakeholders in the YMCA, if they want to make an ask, need to take all that into consideration as well. Adjust the approach, adjust, you know, if it's truly what's good for the community, you make adjustments, if you have a business case here.
Yeah, if it's not addressed publicly, it's always going to be a phantom of anyone's imagination 20 years down the road. And until it's laid out, I think in some element of pro forma, none of us can be articulate clearly what was ever on the table. And we'll always be suffering from that, maybe, or maybe there's a lost opportunity from it. We don't know yet. I appreciate y'all's thoughts on it. Thank you. Thanks for bringing it up.
So I still got 20 minutes? I did, I did want to, so as, as we all know, hiring right now is an issue with, with a lot of businesses. That is not unique, you know, it's affecting Hutch Rec as well. So we're, we're short on our lifeguard projection, which we were last year. I remember I came to a meeting and advised that we were, we made, we made it. I have every intention of making it this year. But just so you're aware, we are putting scenarios together where maybe we're not open seven days a week, we might go five, depending on our ability to hire. We have upped the, the pay. The pay has been kept very low per our contract with you all, because you don't want a subsidy, and so we, but we are going to have to, not, not significant dollars, not hundreds of thousands, obviously, but thousands in pay to, to make sure we open the, the facility. But again, you go to, almost walk into every store, it says, you know, do do staffing shortages.
What's the age of training for lifeguards?
15 is when we can hire, 15.
And we will reimburse training at the end of the summer. A successful summer of employment, we reimburse the cost of the trainees more. And we do have bonuses that we've added, along with the increase in pay.
It's a, it's not bad, it's a fun job, but, yeah, so if you know anybody's looking for a job, we're taking applications.
Especially if it's police, fire, several of the police officers and fire staff that you have actually came from Salt City Splash, they were lifeguards, so. I worked alongside them 20 years ago in that facility. My kid's not old enough yet. Okay, well, when they're 15. That'll be next year. Awesome. We love to train them.
We have a lot of jobs open, open session workers, gym, field supervisors, gym supervisors, umpires. I mean, anybody that wants to go out there and deal with that, we'll, we'll pay you to go do that. But if you're entry level, we, we have you come out of our young kids, and, and so you can get a feel for what umpiring is. You don't have to go straight to the competitive side, so. A lot of job opportunities for teenagers through Hutch Rec, for sure.
Well, again, I wanted to reiterate that we really do value this partnership and what you bring to the table, and your, your success record. Long record of success, and we look forward to conversations during budget season, which is coming up very quickly, and a follow-up conversation in October on aquatics. And I'm sure there'll be some in the interim between the Y's, so. Thank you very much for making your time. And I'm sorry we didn't do introductions earlier. I'm sorry, there's some new people.
We all good?
Okay, yeah, we get to 15 minutes of our life back.